Recording in progress.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order. Today is a regular meeting of Mayor and City Council, and as always, our first action, if you can, please rise and give pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment's silence, please. Okay, thank you. So first, I have a couple announcements myself, just some updates and such. So I think there are, some people might have shown up for coffee on Thursday. I was not there, but I will be there this Thursday. So if you were ever interested or want to, to what those meetings are, they're just a very informal meeting of community members, residents and such, and we, we talk about current topics and that. So that's at eight o'clock at the Net House every Thursday. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank the hard work of our, our maintenance and staff that tried to dig us out as best they could. I know that with, when these things happen, there's always things to learn and improve from the next time, but I know that there was a Herculean effort put forth by their, on their part, so I wanted to, you know, thank them publicly and hopefully that's it, that's all we'll see this winter, but, you know, we'll see on that one. The other thing I wanted to mention is that between, we won't meet before, actually we have a workshop, but next month is Black History Month, and so I think there'll be appropriate activities around that. And then I also did want to mention, since we met last, two really members of the community that are, you know, really Lewis legends, if you will, passed away. Hazel Bridingham, which I think many of you knew, is, you know, the city relied on her heavily for, you know, historical knowledge and, and that, and the other is JB Walsh, and again, was, you know, you know, again, active and stalwart community member. So they'll both be greatly missed, and so just wanted to, to mention that we're thinking of their families, of both families, and that they will be missed by the community at large of Lewis, not just the city of Lewis. So with that, I don't think we have any deletions or additions, and we do have, do we have just the recognition or is there a certi, is there a certificate for employee of the quarter?
That'll be handed out tomorrow.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But I did want to, we do have a recognition of our employee of the quarter, which is Debbie Lent, and I think it's noteworthy, is these things, because they come from their peers. So I don't, so Debbie's not, wasn't able to come tonight yet?
No, she wasn't.
Okay, so Debbie's also someone that typically the residents don't see, but she does a lot of hard work in our finance department, so we appreciate the fact, again, that her colleagues see the hard work that she's done and giving this honor to her. With that, let's move now to the consent agenda. Do we have anyone from the fire department on with us this evening? No? Okay. Again, we'll invite them to, to come to a future meeting, either virtually or here. Robin, anything you want to, no, if you, if you'd like, otherwise you can shake me off, you know, I know you were a catcher, I think, was he a catcher?
No, he was a first baseman.
A first baseman, okay. I know you want to wave me off, you know, or not.
He'd be catching lots of things.
Beating the left hand to ground, but first base.
Okay, fair enough.
Just a few minor things. We still got the canal crossing project going on. As everybody's probably aware, the pipe was pulled underneath the canal before Christmas. Teal came back to work on January 2nd and started the work on American Legion Road and Savannah Road. As you can see, the big patch in the road, put a couple valves in, and now they're working down American Legion Road and going to tie in the pipe there at the front of the sewer plant, and then they'll move across to Gilzneck Road to finish the tie-in. Once that's all tested and done, we'll be up and running. The new water tower, we're working to do a pre-construction meeting, I think, January 23rd, I think. Vince is probably, I think, handling that, but, so hopefully we're moving forwards with that. Teal's working on our header project at the well field. That's the distribution line. We're kind of taking the hodgepodge of sizes out and making it all one size and then tying everything back into the wells. Other than that, we're moving.
You want to remind, your next regular meeting is the?
The 22nd.
22nd?
Yeah, the 22nd of January, yes.
Thanks, Larry.
In this building, thank you.
All best, man.
Mayor, can I make a comment on the fire department? Could we ask that, when they come next month, that they report on, I mean, obviously, the statistics they have, but I think in lieu of the Los Angeles fires, we as council should know, what are our fire risks in Lewis? What's our water BPW? What's our water retention? We just need, should have an update so that we're current with that, and if there are actions that they would be recommending. We have some grant opportunities for frag-mite burns, but, you know, I'd like to hear from the fire department, what, what do they view right now as our short and long-term risks? Yeah.
Okay. Chief, did you want to pull anything out in particular?
Okay.
And there are no lease extensions, so with that, I'll make a call for a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so give Blue a second to bring up Ellen Lorraine's report, and again, I'll remind the audience while Blue brings that up, that these, anything that's attached to the, the meeting, including Ellen Lorraine's report, is there for your consumption and distribution. She doesn't hold any rights to it. She's happy if you want to send along to neighbors.
Yes, absolutely. So, Mayor and council, we're gonna start with a review of the financial report, and this will be as of December. This is a condensed version. The detailed version is attached to the agenda, but we are looking at the summary version tonight. So this is a profit and loss statement by fund. It's, provides the revenues and the expenditures for the general fund, municipal street aid, all the way through Sally Eady, general capital projects, one and one-half percent transfer tax. We are nine months into fiscal year 2025, and we should be at 75% of budget. We go to page two, Blue. At the bottom, you'll see a all funds category, which is a summary and total of all of the funds, and at the end of December, revenues were at 91% of budget and expenditures were at 73%, so we are trending well. The billing for business licenses and rental licenses, which run calendar year, that was completed in December of 2024. Some of that revenue was realized in December, and we will continue to recognize revenue from those license collections for many more months to come. The gross rental receipts tax, which is due on February the 1st. This is a 5% tax that's paid by property owners who rent out their residential property. That'll be a revenue line coming in. And some other notes are the finance committee members and city staff met with representatives of the four banking institutions that the city deals with. So excess city funds will be earning greater yields than they have been because of these conversations, and these yields will certainly help the city budget as we start preparing that for FY '26. And the auditors are finalizing the 23 audit numbers and beginning the 24 audit in the next month or so. Let's go to the balance sheet next. So some important information, and this is a condensed balance sheet. Total assets from FY '23, I'm sorry, December of '23 to December of '24 are up 1.4% or 881,000. The bulk of this is going to be in the cash checking line, which is up 675,000, and in the investments line, which is up 206,000. Our liabilities are up 5,500, but overall, there's an increase in total liabilities and fund balance. And one last thing I'd like to note is the city has finally paid off our general obligation debt. That final payment was made in January this year, so we are excited to be completed with that. Are there any questions about the financial report?
No.
Appreciate you giving us an update.
I like his new summary. It's very helpful.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so may we move on to the management report? So I want to also echo the mayor's sentiments that our maintenance staff deserve kudos for the snow event that occurred last week. They worked very hard and they began in the very early hours of Monday, making sure that the streets were plowed as best they could on Monday, considering the significant snowfall that we had. And then in the days subsequent to that, they worked hard to collect that snow and remove it where there were parts of town that was no place to push it. I also want to recognize the efforts of city staff who worked hard to send out as much information ahead of the storm. We did Facebook postings, we sent, used a subscriber list to send out emails and texts. As a courtesy, we also send information to our homeowners association contacts so that they could share it with their membership. The ask that I have is for residents to sign up directly through our subscription service, and this will ensure that they get that information timely. We may not always have up-to-date HOA contact information, and so there may be a delay if it is that method that they are relying on to get information, but if they signed up through our website, they certainly would get it much quicker. Okay, so some road updates. There will be a bid opening for the Ocean View Boulevard, which is also known as the Phase 26 Street Improvement Project, this Wednesday at 2:00. The acceptance of the successful bidder will be on the February 10th agenda of Mayor and City Council. The pre-con meeting will begin the first week of March, and the intent is to have construction begin mid-March with the goal of having this project done before June. On the canal front dredging, that, the dredger is expected this week. We have received all of the call share agreements from the participants who will be part of this project, and the project will be completed by March 1st. We did receive a five-year consent from the United States Army Corps of Engineers to use the disposal site off of Angler's Road. Christmas trees will be collected this Wednesday as part of the yard waste collection. We just ask that trees be free of lights and ornaments. Updating, coming, the coming holidays where the city and BPW offices will be closed is Monday, January 20th for Martin Luther King Jr. Day and Monday, February 17th for President's Day. Upcoming meetings of council, as was mentioned, there's a workshop on January 23rd. There's a joint meeting of the city council and BPW on the 27th at 1:00, and there will be a public hearing on February 3rd regarding the proposed night sky friendly lighting standards. That will be at 5:30 in the Rollins Center, and then there'll be another regular meeting of council on the 10th of February. And as was stated by the Robin of the BPW, the next meeting of, that board will be January 22nd. Here's a listing of meetings of committee and commissions. The planning commission will be meeting this Wednesday. You can click on to see that agenda. Johnny Walker Subcommittee and the African-American Heritage Commission will be meeting on Thursday. And the finance committee, they will be picking up the torch from the Financial Storage Ship Subcommittee. This meeting will be held January 21st, and it will be in this room. That agenda will be published tomorrow, but it is to assist with the preparation of our multi-year budget effort, which will begin in fiscal year '26. Do three-year budgeting and a two-year forecast, so stay tuned for that, and the work from this finance committee will be shared with the mayor and city council by the February 1st deadline to have a balanced budget, draft balanced budget. The environmental subcommittee of the planning commission will be meeting on the 21st at 1:00. Parks and Rec Commission, they are, were scheduled to meet on January the 20th, but that is a holiday, so their meeting has been pushed to January 27th at 5:00 in the Rollins Center, and then the Bike Ped meeting will be on January the 28th at 5:30. I just wanted to make note of some employee information before we get into the departmental operations. Our city planner, Janelle, has been selected to present at the National Planning Association Conference on March the 30th, and this is to cover how the city took the footprint art project and turned it into ordinances. So we want to congratulate her on being, being able to make this presentation at such a national event, so congratulations. I also want to recognize some employment anniversaries that occurred in January, will be occurring in January. Sue Ann Hennessy has been with the city for seven years. She is our executive assistant. Donna Stacey X. Smith, she is our front desk specialist. She's been with the city for three years. And Austin Stewart in our police department has also been with the city for three years, so we, we congratulate them on their, their time with the city. So now moving on to departmental operations. So we did issue seven bond fire permits in December, so we're still tracking a few behind where we were in fiscal year 2024, but not too far. A lot of those permits were issued either by coming into City Hall or using our civic rec portal, so we, that has been busy. Moving on to refuse. We've seen a reduction from fiscal year '25 over fiscal year '24 in all of the lines. Recycling is down 16 tons year-to-date. Yard waste is down 39 tons, and regular trash is down almost 48 tons. In building permits, we've seen a 27% increase, or 160 more permits issued in fiscal year '25 over '24, and the two big areas are new homes and residential renovations. New homes were up 108 and renovations were up 27. And business licenses, we've seen a 4% increase, or 52 more business licenses issued for calendar year '24 than calendar year '23, and we've seen a 26% increase in short-term and long-term rentals combined, 474 in calendar year '24 compared to 375 in '23. And for reported concern, there were seven submissions. We had eight responses, and our average response time went from two days to one day in December, but we are still trending about two days' response, so I think that's pretty good. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to our regular agenda, which are two parts, and again, just for the public's benefit, we will take comment at the end of the evening on essentially anything, doesn't mean we'll reply back to you, but we have workshops and we have hearings where we interact with the public tonight is just really for decision-making. So with that said, the first item is under unfinished business, and this is continued discussion of possible action on proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 183. This is Section 183-39 and Section 183-41 to place no parking standing or stopping signs and yellow curb painting along Savannah Road from municipal city limits to Drake Knoll on both sides of Savannah Road. So I think this is again one that first came through a workshop, who's, came to us in a regular meeting, then we sent to Bike and Ped. They recommended adopting the ordinance as written. I think it was four to one?
Four to one.
Four to one. So now it's back to us, and I think what's been prepared for council here are options in terms of, you know, ranging from, again, adopting the ordinance as written, which is version two, you know, essentially is summarize no parking any along Savannah Road on both sides there. So to begin discussion, if, does anyone have, want to start by making a motion, and then we can get into a discussion?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the original ordinance as written.
Okay, you have a second?
And that would be version two, correct? Is that?
Version two.
Version two, right.
Which is?
Original was version one.
I'm sorry, the version one. Version one. Version two had some modifications in it.
Okay, and we want to be, can you just be, sort of highlight what those are before, so that, just for transparency?
So version two is identical on the inbound side, on Savannah Road, inbound to the city. On the outbound side, it, it stops the restrictions at Hollin Cove, so the car dealership following Hollin Cove, if you're headed outbound, is, there's no parking restrictions there. So that's the only difference with version two.
And that reason is because it's outside of city limits?
Yeah.
Or Maryland?
I had a preference for that version because the city limits are not a straight line, just making clear that the city's not assuming any ownership or responsibility for that section of the road.
So?
So you're looking for a second?
On the version two, which with Alex is described as the slight difference between version one.
Right, and I will approve that. I second Dr. Elder's motion.
Okay, so before we take a vote, do you want to have some discussion around any difference in opinion to that? Okay.
I'd like to add with that motion, maybe perhaps my, my rationale. There have been a lot of proposals. I think that right now, that's a very dangerous area, and while we all believe that there needs to be some work there, I think that we need to allow our police to be able to enforce the law. Putting a temporary stop order on the, the parking along there renders our police department impotent because they cannot find or enforce it, and that creates a problem for them as well as, well, it's enforcement, it's, it's not good. So what I, what I think needs to happen there is, by adopting this, we make sure that area is safe, but at the same time, and I don't know if I can add this to the ordinance, I feel a great need to have that whole area studied. Not saying that this would be even permanent, we can always change this ordinance, if we could get Del Dot out here to help us, but all of the proposals that we have looked at, they all are meeting the same goal, to try to get it safe and to get Del Dot to engage with us, and in the long run, get this problem resolved. And this seems to me to be the most prudent way to do it, just because it is such a safety hazard.
Yeah, I, I would agree that, I mean, public safety is our primary mission as council, and this area, because of the choke point, has high risk, but I, I like, Councilman Elder, what you're saying, which is, if we pass this, that doesn't mean that we don't also direct our city manager, and I know she's already done yeoman's work on this, but to get Del Dot here when the snow melts, and get Del Dot here to actually sit down with our police department, with city management, and look at this, look at the bike, look at the, what part is a restricted bike lane? What is a bike lane? How we could maybe have signage difference to direct cyclists to the bike path? And I would also look at, like what Rehoboth has, where they have potential conflict areas and they put in, some people call them candlesticks, the, the flexible poles to protect those cyclists. So I agree that this needs, it doesn't need further study, meaning we can't take action. I think we should take action, but I think we should recognize that the area is problematic for a lot of reasons. The, the crosswalk is, the location, so Del Dot needs to come back in with us, hearing what we're trying to accomplish, in addition to parking, but safe parking, and see if we can come up with a better approach for that section of the city.
So, so jumping in here, I, I agree with much of what both of you have said, and I don't think I need to reiterate that, that safety is, is paramount in this area. The one difference I do have, and I'll go to Councilman Elder's point about trusting our police department and giving them deference and giving them authority, we have had, we had a temporary measure there with cones set up recently, where the police department did designate certain area, a certain area there to be for parking. And as I've shared with all of you, none of us here are traffic engineers, we don't, we're not experts. I'm not an expert on, on engineering when it comes to biking, but I think, the one thing at, at our disposal is our police department that has more experience and knowledge, and I'm a little concerned that we're not showing deference to them on this particular point here.
Councilman Saliba, at one of our recent discussions on this particular topic, we wanted to put in some sort of a stop order, and we asked our chief if they would be able to enforce a temporary order, and they could keep an eye on it, but we were told we needed an ordinance because without official adoption of the ordinance, they are, they are officers of ordinance. They can't enforce if there's no ordinance. So he explained that to us, and that's why we, we crafted this, and I think that we handicap our police officers if somebody drives up there and the cones are there and they say, "You have to move," and they say, "I'm not moving." There's not a lot they can do about it.
I think it's not a binary cho, choice. You, you have the option to, as he's laid out where chief has put out, to see, people have been respecting that so far, they've not parked there, and so I think in some ways it's proven out. And the other thing I'd add to it, in, in some ways, of course, when there was no restriction to parking up there, it was a bit chaotic, but now that there are three or four spots where you see cars, in some ways, in my mind, it acts as a calming device where you see, okay, there are cars parked, I'm entering a more urban setting, therefore, I ought to slow down, whereas I don't think that that was happening previously. I don't, you know, Mike's, I know he's probably anecdotally can tell us how that's happened over time, and I know that in the past, prior to the Lewis Brewery opening, there, they fired down there 45 miles an hour or higher even. So the other change I think we would ask Del Dot to make is move that, that sign that registers their speed before they get into Lewis, because by the time they get to that sign, they're already doing 45. But I would make that, you know, again, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but I do think that there's some benefit that you derive by seeing a few parked cars there in an orderly fashion where there's the defined spots. And I think that also, and I don't want to, you know, talk about usurping whose power, but we, we sent the Bike and Ped, or essentially a binary choice, what do you think of this ordinance? And, you know, one of their own members said, you know, if they had a chance to chew on it, he had, he had some ideas, and I think, once, if we dogmatically say no, it's, it's harder than to go back and say, "Well, actually, now you can accommodate three spots," whereas if you say, "The three or four spots that are there now seem to be working now, we're in, you know," and see how it continues to go from there. That's all on proposed.
Yeah, and can I add to that, too? I mean, we've, we've discussed this, but it's worth highlighting that the area there that is, is being suggested as for parking, I think we're talking three or four spots out of potentially 15 or 20 on, on that whole area there. We're looking to kind of come up with, adopt this ordinance as is with an amendment, essentially amending it that three or four spots be permitted there, and then we're gonna go, and, and because I'm relying on, on, on our Lewis Fire, Police Department, who had, who did go and look at that and has explained and feels comfortable. We've had letters from the fire department in EMTs that they don't feel like that's a hindrance, because that was some, another issue that came up, that we would potentially be slowing down emergency vehicles, and I don't think we're that far off. I think we're all kind of in the same area. I just think some of us are looking to kind of find a compromise that supports a local business there, and that local business, the Lewis Brewing Company, has in fact made some very good points, and since, as Councilman Elder said, referred to it as a very dangerous area. And since, as Councilman Elder said, referred to it as a very dangerous area, if that's going to be our standard, which we're going to approach parking or no parking, then we really need to look at everything down Savannah Road.
Including Cedar Street.
And Cedar Street is, you know, is a terrible place, where, you know, the car doors open if you're biking on the road, because there's no bike path. I'm just saying, in this particular situation, I do think it's a very reasonable concession to make to one of our local businesses, to allow some parking there. And if the chief and his folks said, "Hell, no, this is not going to work, this is a problem with egress, and I don't," you know, then I would pretty much say, "I have to defer to the chief." But that's all, you know, I could, I could support this amendment, this ordinance, if it had some provision for parking there, even be willing to put a December 31 sunset on it. Because as you, as Councilman Elder said, I think we all intend to go back to Del Dot and sit down with them and understand what their thinking is for that stretch there. Because I think a lot of us are still kind of scratching our heads, why is that bike path even there?
Right.
I mean, we bring people all the way in, encourage them to come into Lewis, and then at Drake Knoll, they have no warning that they now have to share the road with motorists. And a lot of bikers aren't very uncomfortable with that, and I think we are setting them up for failure by doing that. But that's something I think we definitely will do, and I think we have a consensus on that, going back to them. But in the interim, I'm just, I can't support the ordinance as is, but I could support it if there was limited parking, and it's because I think we need to help the Lewis Brewing Company or support them, just like Lloyd's has parking in front of them, just like the Honeys does. And it doesn't seem to me to be people coming out of the woodwork complaining about that as a, as a dangerous situation. And again, this could be temporary, we could, we could get the Del Dot, they decide, you know, through some of their studies and others, that parking there is inefficient and it's unsafe. But that's, that's my approach to this, is I'm trying to help a local business.
Could we, could we take that, just flip it the other way and say, going with the version or the motion on the table, and say, "We're going to enact this ordinance, but we're going to put a clock on it to say, 'We have to have Del Dot in within six months,'" some, or some timeframe, whatever that is?
I think that would be reasonable.
Because that triggers us, that we're back to take action, which I think is important for our small businesses. But I would choose safety over anything else temporarily, but hold us responsible to, not only get that Del Dot meeting, but actually, you know, make sure that happens and we're part of that.
One of the things going along with this, that I find frustrating, and I've, I've been out, I've talked to folks about this, I've done some research on it, quite a bit of research actually on it. And one of the things that has come up is, we have the traffic calming island there, and it was stated to me, they changed that. There was some work done around the base of that, at about the same time, it seems, that some curbing was put in, and there was work being done on those developments. And I asked, "Well, who was it?" "Well, we think it was Del Dot, but we don't know who designed it. Was it the owner of the development over there? Did they get to do some reengineering in that area? Why didn't we know? Who are they? How do you get ahold of them? Who's responsible for the way they did that thing there?" No one seems to know. And I don't know how, as, that we wouldn't know, or our City Hall wouldn't know what happened there. It's, the organizations are working, they're not working together. And so, that causes these kinds of problems. And hopefully, if we get them to the table, if we can find out how all this stuff happened, we could try to rectify some of it.
But in the meantime, I agree with Councilwoman Marasco in that safety is a paramount concern and responsibility of this council. And as a result of that being a primary concern, that is something that has to be addressed and has to be included in our action this evening. And I believe that this version two of this draft ordinance addresses that, because in fact, it, it creates an area that is free of any kind of encumbrance in the form of parked cars. And that creates and maintains a safe area for cyclists to use the bike lane. The fact that it's incremental, the fact that the bike lane does not extend the full length of Savannah Road is not in discussion. It's not what this ordinance addresses. It addresses a very specific area of the city, that is in the city, along Savannah Road. And it's an opportunity for us to make that area as safe as possible until we have this meeting that Councilperson Marasco has suggested with, with Del Dot, and possibly...
Well, apparently, you have some evidence that we're not, we're not privy to, because I don't know why we keep saying this is a dangerous, dangerous area. We're talking about, I would have zero problem if we're talking about an area that's had a lot of accidents, a lot of problems and such. When the Lewis Brewing Company opened, I think everybody was like, "Whoa," shocked at all these cars parked there. But that subsided after two weeks. And I will, as I said earlier, I got to reiterate this. I don't know why it's suddenly dangerous and why you, why you think you have high ground on safety. I 100% agree with you, and have, in fact, I was the one who pushed the mayor to move, to push this issue to the Bike and Pet Committee, to give more deference and more study on this. But I'm sitting here, and I repeat it again, when we were starting this, we, I'm deferring to Chief Spell and his people, that we have a 13-foot and a half-foot shoulder there. It's not, it's short, it's narrower farther down than others, and we've seen pictures of cars eight feet giving you then, you know, five feet there, which is wider than a lot of bike lanes that we have. It's wider than the bike lane that is in front of Dutchman's Harvest. So, all I'm saying is, I mean, we all for safety, I think this is a reasonable, you know, concession, and I don't really buy the argument that this is an awful place, it's a dangerous place, particularly since we've identified Lloyd's and the area Honeys, by all accounts, is much more dangerous, has many more cars, it is very hard to get through there. Although, I kind of like it in some respect, because as I mentioned to the mayor, it's traffic calming. You slow down when you're driving there, and you do that.
And I acknowledge the effect of parked cars along the curb in the area of Lloyd's and Honeys, and along that whole stretch of Savannah. I do acknowledge that. But the fact of the matter is, is that our instructions to the, our Bike and Pet Committee was very specific. It didn't ask them to review the entire Savannah Road.
No one's saying that.
Right. So, they have fulfilled their mission.
They did.
They took, they studied it, I attended their meeting, you, all of us were in attendance with the exception of the mayor, in person, I'm speaking of. And, and I was very impressed with the thorough study, the thorough research that the members of that committee did. And at the conclusion of their discussion, they took a vote, and it was a four to one with one abstention.
That's all been discussed, we know that.
And so, it's a very firm recommendation to this body here, and...
And you, you want to grant them deference, like we all do to our committees? Correct? Yeah?
They, they've taken the time to, their time to study the issue.
That's fine, they did.
And, and their recommendation is that the, that space be used as a bike lane. And as described in the ordinance, in this draft, it describes where it begins and where it ends.
But my understanding, also coming out of that, that doesn't, even if there is a bike lane there, the Delaware's law doesn't prevent you from parking in a bike lane.
Well, we had Ellen Lorraine contact Delaware, the state of Delaware, and ask them about that, and the word we got back is, there's to be no parking there, unequivocally.
This is all new information.
We flew in the face of that recommendation, and we put a temporary stay on it until we could get ahold of them, and this is what we were told. So, why are we not following through?
Well, why didn't you share that with us?
She reported it back, she reported it to us at our meeting. We were all here, we all heard it.
They are taking it as a designated bike lane, but there is no state law that prohibits parking in a bike lane.
Right. That's right.
Okay.
So, that's not what you just said.
I, I didn't take it that way, Ellen Lorraine.
Their guidance, I think what our city manager's saying, which is accurate, is, and Khalil, Saliba, you're accurate, there is no state law in Delaware that prohibits it. It is Del Dot's practice and guidance to not have parking in a designated bike lane.
And, and, and they did recommend that we not have parking there?
Yes.
That was the recommendation.
That was the recommendation.
That was the recommendation, it wasn't a mandate.
Correct.
It was a recommendation because they were deferring to a local community, because our situation with our bike lane may be different than the situation in Rehoboth or Dewey Beach. And that's the basis of my, my, which I'm not sure would be accepted, a friendly amendment to allow parking there, because we have a uniquely large shoulder in that area, which I believe is safe, and has been reaffirmed by the police department. That's the whole, that's, that's my point.
So, Deputy Mayor, I think, I actually, as you said, I think we're actually all in agreement, because we're in agreement on safety, you know, we're agreement that we need more data.
I said that earlier.
So, what I would just say is, let's take the opportunity to act upon this, but again, as I had mentioned, with a specific requirement that the traffic study on Del Dot is done.
I support that 100%, but I don't know, they're not, but I'm asking you, in the same good faith effort, why not three parking spots?
Because, just as you said, though I respect the chief fully, I'd rather default in the public process to, "We're going to vote on safety as we know it, we're not traffic engineers, and we're going to ask traffic engineers to come in." And you know what they might find out? We might find out that the whole thing is inappropriate, meaning we should have parking and they shouldn't have a designated bike lane. In other words, they might come in and say, "You know what? This designated bike lane doesn't work for you guys."
Of course, that bike, bike lane was never there until the Lewis Brewing Company was built. That was, that was, and that's one of the questions we need to ask them.
Yeah.
But I mean, I have a little, I have just a little concern here, in that Councilman Ritzer wants to defer to the Bike and Pet Committee, which we all want to, our committees, we rely on them for their expertise, everything. And generally, we do mostly support there, but why, if we're going to, if we're going to show that deference to Mary Roth, the chair of the committee, which typically we do, how come we're not showing the same deference to the police department? And, and, and the decisions they've made on this, their judgment. It seems to me very selective. We choose whoever we want to follow if it fits our narrative or fits our, our point of view. And based on that, I'm just saying, you know, the Bike and Pet Committee, four to one, supported this. And now, we're trying to find a compromise, at least I'm trying to find a compromise here to help, and I'm deferring to the police, and it seems like we're not giving him and his folks the same deference. That's all. I find that...
Well, we did follow their recommendation, and we did put temporary parking in, and we did create the ordinance for the police, Khalil. We did all those things for our police department.
And?
And, now we're at the point where we have to make a decision about an ordinance, which they ask us to write, so they could enforce the law, and make that safe, until we get the state in here to help us out. And, by the way, this is, when you look at safety all the way up Savannah, the good news is, we've received a grant, and we will be looking at city, at safety citywide, and the Bike and Pet Committee will be involved in that process. So, there's good news ahead. We're going to make the whole city safer.
So, let's do it this way, so to the, to the point, you made, you made a motion...
I did.
It sounds like there were two amendments, one of which is Councilperson Saliba's, but it doesn't sound like you are going to accept that amendment.
No, no.
Councilperson Marasco has articulated an amendment to include some review by Del Dot. Do you want to put some meat behind, maybe some timelines and such, and see if you accept this part?
So, I'm proposing a friendly amendment to your motion, Councilman Elder, that puts parameters of time, specifically that we, the city manager would be directed to request a meeting with Del Dot, so that, and the city, and the police, and representatives from council, looking at the area that this ordinance addresses, to see if, for them to actually convey whether they believe this is safe for parking, and/or they change their view of a designated bike lane, so that they have a short window of six months that they, we would have, they would have to come back, or the city manager would come back to council.
And...
So, the meeting would have to be held within...
The meeting would have to, my friendly amendment says, which is, doesn't sound clear, is that within a six-month period of passing this ordinance, should we pass this ordinance, there would be a meeting and a presentation, sorry, there would be a presentation made to city council on the safety aspects of this section of our city.
Okay. I, I think also, I don't know how this could be included, or if it is appropriate.
So, you accept that?
I would accept that.
I'm sorry.
It would be that if we do get to meet with Del Dot, I would like it to be a transparent meeting, where there are people there to hear this and engage with them, rather than just a phone call or something, because I want the folks out here to understand the decisions that Del Dot is making that affect our community. They need to be held accountable for what's happened there as well.
Well, I think, I think to clarify, it should be an onsite meeting, so it's not...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, onsite meeting.
Thank you.
You do accept that as a friendly amendment?
I do.
Okay. Anything else that, to amend, to add to the amendment? Okay. We're in a good place on this motion now, Alex? Okay, so then, I'll call it to a vote. Does it need to be a roll call, or just, okay, so up and down? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, moving on to I two, so that passes the, in terms of the, with the friendly amendment that we have Del Dot come in. I two, this is continued discussion, possible action to include scheduling a public hearing regarding ordinance 125, an ordinance to delete and replace its entirety, Chapter 170, subdivision land development code, Section 26E, open spacing municipal city code of Louis. This proposed ordinance updates the open space requirements for major subdivisions and site plans, including increased amount of open space required, what is considered open space, design of open space, and other items. So, we're, I think you said the third?
February 12.
The 12th for this one? Okay, 5:30.
February 12, 5:30.
So, I'm looking for a motion to send this to a public hearing on February 12 at 5:30 at Margaret Rollins Center.
I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for I two for February 12, 5:30, Rollins Center.
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
It is a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
Second that motion.
Okay. I think the reason is that that's not such as an urgency to get that on, onto our next regular meeting.
A rescheduling of one, we were supposed to have held January 6.
Right, okay. So, you got a motion?
I said it.
A second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we go to J one, because I think the next one should be also setting a public hearing, I'm going to just go ahead and move J two up also, because it's...
Take that first.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, because it shouldn't take long. So, this discussion, a possible action to schedule a public hearing on waiver requests from Chapter 170, 39C for carriage housing at Cape Pen Lo宾 regarding an increase in time for the site plan approval. So, this is, I think, February 3 at 5:30 is what I was looking at here. Is that right?
We have it one scheduled, do you want to add it to that?
Can we?
Does that make it that nice?
Okay.
We can do February 3.
All right.
And that would be a poll once again, right?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what's the date of that again?
That one's the 3rd, which is Monday, and we already have one scheduled, so this is one...
Add until...
Tagged on.
Okay. All right, so, can I get a motion for scheduling that one to a public hearing, February 3, which is a Monday, 5:30 at Margaret Rollins?
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing, schedule a public hearing to be held on February 3, 5:30 in the Rollins Center, as it regards the carriage house at Cape Pen Lo宾.
Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, then that leaves us with J one, and I think everyone's, I hope everyone's had a chance to receive the letter, or read the letter that we received from Mr. Horner. that we received from Mr. Horner regarding his requests for the gate at Clara Lane. Does anyone want to have Mr. Horner come up and articulate further or, yeah? Do you wanna... Okay, let's, John, why don't you come on up? Because I did have one question just about the, you know, give this guy a microphone, we're created, but I'll take that risk.
My voice is kinda shouting.
I'll take that risk. So I did have one question, John, so you're asking the gate, obviously, to be held, as you described before, that circle at the top. I assume it would be there rather than at the entrance of the lane itself.
Yeah, so if you see right on the screen behind you, it'd be right after that circle. I will say that the, we've been in contact with the Lewis... Supposed to have a letter out today, but it was, I couldn't get over there today. But he, they're okay with the gate. It asks to have a code provided to them and then also be a breakaway if the code isn't working so they can just drive through it and the HOA be responsible for damages if that... The fire marshal has already approved the plan as is. And the fire marshal has essentially said, they don't have any issue with the gate as long as you get that same letter from the fire department, so.
John, can I ask you a question? How do emergency vehicles, when they're, let's say there's a problem in the community, how do they access? Do they have a code?
The hood of their truck.
Yeah, so they have a few options depending on the gate style. What they require and what they asked for here was just the code to the gate.
So they just want the actual code?
And if they have the code, they can get in, the gate opens, no problem. The gates are also designed where if the code wasn't working, you had to ram them. They're meant to break away or fall, like you can get them built that way so that if there's damage, if the code's not working and there's some sort of exigency, they can get right through it. And there's also gates that are designed where they have siren detection. And so if a siren's coming, it'll open in that way, so.
If you can scream loud enough, you can open it.
If somebody has a banshee screen, they might go hit the gate open right there.
Because I guess, that was one, and again, the other question I had is, do you, are you under a time constraint? Like, is there a need for us to make this decision necessarily tonight?
There is, because we have to, we'll have to go back to the fire marshal, fire marshal approval. And we're going through our agency approvals now, we've gotten comments back from the city. So we're looking to be moving towards final, likely in the April-May timeframe. So that's kind of where we're, the timing of it. One point that I did wanna, that was highlighted in my letter, but I wanted to be clear about is, you know, when we have this commercial use next door, that's been approved for that area and the bike path there, if parking ends up happening on that street, which again is now a private street, there is no way for the HOA to stop it, right? They're gonna have to either get a towing agreement in place, start towing people from the neighborhood, which isn't really feasible for a private neighborhood to do. They can't call the police department to come tow off a private road. And so it just, it's really gonna be problematic and there's gonna be probably residents that are pretty upset back there if that starts to be a problem, so.
But it wouldn't prevent, I mean, to, because one of the things you pointed to is the parking, obviously it eliminates the parking there, but people would still park along the, potentially along the lot, one that's parallel to the Freeman Highway there.
So...
It doesn't prevent parking there.
Correct, it would not potentially present, prevent parking there. I mean, there's gonna be a parking lot in the site plan for the Gibbs piece. So it would not prevent parking along that road. I think that the bigger concern was if you put a gate further up, that you could lead to traffic queuing on Monroe Avenue. And so we kinda looked at it as, the residents are most impacted by parking in front of their houses. The average resident is not having enough people over that they're queuing cars down Monroe Avenue. Like, unless it's Thanksgiving dinner and you got 20 family members over, you're usually okay with your driveway and the parking that's limited in front of your street. So if people were to park on that road, which I believe with the, the street width, parking on one side is permitted by Lewis Code, correct?
Parking is prohibited along the entire width of the road because it is only 24 feet. To have parking on at least one side, it'd have to be 26. And the road width is only 24, so parking is prohibited along the entire road.
Right.
Monroe, all the way up to the last cul-de-sac, right?
Yes, and I think even in between, because I still think it's only 24 feet. I did just look at the plan. And if the gate is approved, the city and the BPW will need the code for the gate as well as there are other items that the city would need access to that portion.
Absolutely, no issue with giving you all the code.
Just making sure it's very clear.
You have a question?
Yeah, well, I have, maybe it's a question or statement. First of all, you know, your letter was really very clear and I'm glad you went back to the property owners. So I mean, you presented everything really clearly, as you always, as you do. My comments are, this was not part of the site plan review. You also did present in the site plan review, an exceptional, I'd say innovative way to handle some environmental issues. You're kind of a showcase, I mean, being very complimentary to what you all created. And now there's a gate. And I worry greatly about gated, the sense of gated communities. I feel like that's not in the rhythm of Louis. I do understand kind of why you're requesting it. But I would really look here as well as to our planning commission in terms of our ordinances. Gates restrict, now you've presented why you want that restricted. But do we really want that in our city? We don't have a lot of land still to develop, but I feel like it sets a precedent. And I don't, and I worry about it. So I think your request is clear and it's factual of why. But I'm not comfortable with, I don't know if we're making a decision tonight, but I'm not comfortable with the thought that our newer developments would be gated. I respect that you don't want it to be a thoroughfare, it's a private road. So that's the conflict for me. But I, but the whole concept of gated communities seems an anathema to me about the character of Louis.
If, if the city were maintaining this road, this request wouldn't exist.
Right.
The reality is, is the city didn't wanna maintain this road. And we were okay with making that request, with it being private. And that's why we made that request and we said, hey, look, that's kinda what the city wanted. We're gonna acquiesce to that and say we're good with it. And we are, ultimately. But you now have one group of people that are responsible for the entire maintenance of this road. It's not like they get a discount on their taxes because they're living on this private road. Anything, any traffic on that road, any damage, any parking, anything that happens, if somebody parks on this road when they're not supposed to, can't call the chief to get to remove it. So you're really disproportionately impacting these 13 residents. And Ms. Cunningham, who has asked for this gate, who's been a resident in the city for, oh gosh, 40 years, I don't even know. So I agree with you, the idea of a gated community in Louis with how open it is, I would say you still have walkability back there. People shouldn't be parking back there, we just said you can't park on that street. So now, if we don't gate it off, we're really saying, come on back, right? There's no reason for anybody to be driving on that road except to access that community. There's none. And so if somebody wants to walk back there, if they wanna use the parking in the commercial space, if they wanna use, go on the bike trail and walk back there and access the area, no problem.
Do you feel that, I mean, I know everyone doesn't read, but it seems like an interim step was signage to say this is a private community, no access, well, access only to the residents. We're all kinda used to that feel. The gate is such a physical barrier that just seems to me it's contrary to the way you have developed properties around Louis as well. So I was just hoping there was maybe something else you could propose to meet your objectives that's not a physical gate.
Yeah, and I think signage could be a deterrent. I just, frankly, I worry that putting a sign up, I know that people ignore signs like crazy, I mean, but if we just do a sign, then the community, the cost of a gate, getting the approvals for the gate, all that's gonna be forced on a community in the future to deal with. It's gonna be forced, forced on Ms. Cunningham to deal with cars coming down there and exploring, so.
Do you have any examples of what a gate, this gate would look like? Or have you gotten that far?
We have, we have not, ultimately. We're kind of trying to tie the entire aesthetic of the community together and there's, we needed to hear exactly from the fire chief what he was gonna require. If he was gonna require a full breakaway gate, then you kind of are limited to the sort of single swing arm versus, you know, you can have a more, I don't know if you've been to the peninsula, obviously has a big elaborate metal gate. I don't think we're going in that direction, but frankly, we're gonna look to our landscape architect for options that would be consistent with the aesthetic of the area.
Mr. Horner, is Mrs. Cunningham's driveway inside or outside the proposed location for that gate?
It is past the gate.
So you would have to get through that gate to be able to turn onto her driveway?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
So is that a, actually, would that be a change in the layout of her current driveway?
So her driveway, there'll be a slight extension of her driveway just to connect to the new road. Because the road is being widened and improved, so her driveway will have, her driveway already connects past that road on what's there now, but there'll be a connection from her driveway to the road over a small eastbound area.
Janelle, I know that you said that because it's not our, like, obviously we don't have gates, that's why Mr. Horner's here asking for one. Let's take the scenario that this was Ms. Cunningham's property on her own. Would she be able to put up a gate on her own property?
Yes.
Without, like, she'd come to you for a permit and say, I wanna put up a gate?
She'd come to us for, like, a wall fence.
Just her private, one, one, a parcel property?
Right, it would have, we had somebody recently come in, it was part of a fence, because people kept driving and parking in their parking space. But it's, it only, I think it's more than three feet tall. It actually, it's in the historic district, so it went through the proper historic review. So if somebody could put up something across their driveway, that would be considered like a wall fence.
And frankly, there's, there's nothing in the code prohibiting us from doing this without this request. I'm here, obviously out of respect for this body and I wanna do the right thing. And if you guys say no, I'm not going to do it, just to be clear. But I'm just saying, I could have just done, gone and done it because it is a private road and there's nothing that restricts it. But ultimately, I, whatever decision you all make is what we will do.
Janelle, can you remind me or remind us how we went from private, public road to private? I, I'm trying to remember that, recall that myself and I'm struggling right now.
There was a request from the property owner on clarification as to who would own that. And they didn't wanna wait until final subdivision approval. So they came and asked, a couple months after the preliminary plan approval, to allow for the road to be private.
Let's understand the genesis of the request, though. The genesis of the request was at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was stated multiple times by members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that they wanted the council to consider the impact on the tax base of having to pay for such a long road for only 13 homes. And then there were comments by this body asking us, without asking us, to consider making it a private road. So it wasn't like I came in and said, I want it to be a private road.
I understand.
I thought that would be private, I thought we just weren't going to pave down to about where the gate is, that we would take all that, but we weren't going into the community. There was...
Entire thing.
None of it is City Louis.
It was the entire thing.
It's all private, it's all maintained by the HOA.
Wow.
I'm gonna speak to what Councilperson Marasco raised, the point that she made. And what is, what is troubling me is the idea, folks here in the room, my peers here have heard me use this term before. I don't like the idea that we are creating compounds in our city, creating physical barriers separating homeowners from everyone else. They're city residents, these folks would be city residents. I understand they pay, will be paying property taxes as all city property owners do. But the fact that a, a fence, a gate would be constructed that would separate these residents from the rest of us is troubling to me. And I don't think that is, I don't think, it's not, it's not inscribed in our core values, but it just doesn't feel right to me. I can't think of any other examples of a private community which has been gated inside the city. We have communities that are located on the beach side of the city, which are condominiums. And they are, they're not gated, you can drive in and, you know, they might, they are signed, I think. There are some signs, if I remember correctly. Cape Shores, the roads in that community are private roads. And it's signed, you know, for guests and residents.
Cape Shores might not be the best example because they have to have access there because they have a public beach.
But nonetheless, the roads there are privately ma, privately maintained, that's the point. And if you go to Pilot Point and the other communities there, the driveway entrance comes to a public road and there's no gate. They have not requested gates and the developers did not originally.
Right, but they have, there's a reason to access those communities if you're the public. If you're the public, there's a reason there's access to a public beach there. There's no reason to access here. Ultimately, though, I do wanna be clear on the request.
Excuse me, Mr. Horner, and all due respect, during your plan review, one of the salient points that you made that was so attractive to the planning commission, as I recall, was the feature associated with what I would call the gazebo, you know, that, that piece of stormwater management. It was described to be very innovative. It was supposed to be a teaching opportunity for anyone. It was described that way, that it was gonna be, I'll use even the word elaboratory, for best practices. And the idea that we would put a physical, put a gate there restricting people to be able to get there to view that, you know, is contrary to what we were, what we were, what we approved and what we expected.
Right, so again, to go back on the history of that. We did a green design and we wanted to do green features, we wanted to do all that. It was then the Parks and Rec Committee that said, hey, we wanna showcase this and we wanna put this plaque here. And we said, hey, we have no problem putting a plaque there. And then somehow that turned into a thought, and you conveyed this last time this discussion was had, that you thought it was gonna, the open space is gonna be open to the general public. And we're like, we've never said that. And honestly, it's a, it's a, now if the public wants to walk back there, right? I'm happy making the HOA documents so that the public can access it by pedestrian access. But again, we're talking about wear and tear on the roads. Ultimately, a gate costs us as a developer more money. I think what this is for is the 14 people that are back there. And I think the 14 people that are back there, if it is not gated, are going to be here, very unhappy in a short period of time when a large restaurant or something goes next door or when people use their street. So, I mean...
But that's why, even when you said that you're under a time constraint, in my mind, the fire marshal, this again could be something that's a, it's an add-on. It's like, you're talking about maybe a rock column that has a swinging gate. It's like, I don't see the urgency of...
Well, at some point, we, we're done building and selling the project and then it's not us putting the gate in, it's the homeowners. Which is, which is fine if you wanna tell, you know, 14 homeowners, hey, guys, it is bad back there. We'll approve your gate now and you guys need to pay for an expensive gate to put in.
I find it troubling that all of this work was done, all this trust was developed, all this negotiating was done, all the gives were given in both sides, and now we have a gate. And it just seems counterintuitive, frankly.
I think there's a way to meet your goal. You have a real talented landscape architect with you that was proven to the planning commission and to council. And so, I'm just gonna call it a half gate, I'm sure there's, it's not, there's a better term. But basically, all, all, I think you could get where you wanna go without a gate with a visual half gate, meaning just an elegant entrance to this subdivision you've created with signage. So it, it has a slight barrier, it's not a gate, everybody can drive through it. But you know, when you see those, whether they're columns or half gates, they give you the knowledge as a motorist that, oh, this is a private area. So what I would say is, it's hard to make a decision on something when we don't even know what it looks like. I think you're hearing a lot of concern, but maybe you can come up with something that's creative and doesn't go all the way to a formal code-bearing gate, but gives a little bit of protection to your community while you're still developing, I don't know.
So I would agree with that, 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 that's why I mentioned earlier, what would a gate look like? Because what can be used? Although, I do wanna highlight the fact that most of these decisions like this, like the previous decision, we have, all about trade-offs. We're always talking about balancing things. And I remember the hearings prior to this pretty well. And I feel a little bit bad for Mr. Horner in a sense. We almost kind of, we highly recommended that he take over that street, private street, because I remember some of us saying, God, it's a long street, that's gonna take, that's gonna, you know, it's gonna cost this, you know, trash, and then, you know, I remember snow removal, you know, being one of the things. And we almost kind of encouraged him to do that, to make it private. And now he comes back and he did it. He assumed the responsibilities of having a private street there and such. And I think his point is persuasive about the concern for the, for the 14 folks that are gonna live in there. I, like you, I don't, I'm not looking for some huge monstros, you know, signal to, you know, this is the most exclusive place in Louis, you're not welcome. But I think there's a way, and I, and I'm... there's a way, and I, and I would not be comfortable voting on this tonight, I would like to see some ideas of what a gate or what it might look like, maybe, maybe it's not even visible from King's Highway, the way you would do it, something that is unobtrusive, but sends the signal that people who, whenever the Gibbs property gets redeveloped and stuff, that, you know, presumably it's going to be commercial. I mean, if I lived there, I wouldn't want people driving in and parking, and then there's no, and I have no recourse. I mean, that, that's a persuasive point, that these, they got, they're on a private road, now they have no recourse to call the police and others, and to, to manage it. So to me, it's a trade-off. That's all.
Okay, with that being said, uh, he mentioned he's, I, I will call for a motion, and that way, if I don't get a motion, we can assume that it's, we can pick this back up, or if there is...
We could do it on June thir-, we could make on our public workshop the twenty-third, I know times it, so that's a couple weeks from now.
The reality is, is that I've got to do my resubmission to the Fire Marshal if we're doing a gate, really to hit our timelines within the next two weeks. So if...
I'll call it to a, a motion, or is it, someone prepared to make a, a motion to approve? And I would assume, Janelle, if there's an approval, you would need some dimensions around, because, you know, so there, there are specs out there for gates, yeah?
Yeah, I, I would like some guidance towards a gate, or if you're going to approve a gate, that the design has to come through as part of the plan review, and then, and then before mayor and council, if you'd like to see it back, or otherwise, if you just want me to...
And if you give me guidance...
Well, honestly, you're going to see it at some point.
Okay, let's just put out there, is, is someone prepared to make a motion?
Can I ask for a pause for a second? Why can't we get you on a schedule? I mean, I understand you've got some other schedule requirements to let us see this. I mean, we might be able, there may be some answer out there that we could approve, rather than having a, I mean, let me say it very clearly, I'd vote against this, because I don't know what it is.
That's kind of where I'm at.
But that doesn't seem like a good...
I'll be pretty transparent, but put it on tonight.
If you give me, if you give me guidance on what you would want to see out of a gate, I don't want to come back with thirty different options, and you guys say, "I hate all of them, and I've spent all this time, effort, and energy to come up." So are we looking for something that is like, a single...
If you put us something on a sketch like this with some dimensions, so that we understand, I think would at least be...
Right, but, but it sounded, though, like, well, my concern with doing that is, it sounds like at least three people here are fundamentally opposed to a gate, period. So what I don't want to have happen is, I spend three weeks, and I come in with twenty options of gates, we say we hate them all, "Thanks for wasting my time," kind of thing.
It's a fair point. Councilperson Marasco has described an op-, a alternative to a gate, and I can think in my mind of examples, and I'm just pulling these off the top of my head, uh, if you go up and down Gilznack Road, there are many communities with, which have private roads, and they all have entrances which are, provide signage, and that signage is, uh, found on, individual signs that are mounted frequently to walls that have been constructed at the entrance. It formalizes the entrance, but it is not something that blocks the flow of traffic. It is not a gate, per se, it is gate-like.
Yeah.
You know, the, the lanes of travel are open, twenty-four, seven, no special codes needed.
So there's, you know, the major problems with that, one, everything on Gilznack Road is two hundred homes, building a, an entrance monument, that, not super feasible. The other, more technical reason why it's not feasible is, we have a narrow easement. There's, if, an, a large, an entrance monument is not going to fit. Like, a gate that is a standing block like this, comes across the road, will fit, a large lavish entrance monument, it, it, it won't fit in the easement area, it's, it, there's no space.
Also, there's a setback from the road for, for an entrance sign, um, but maybe it's a combination of landscaping and something like that, that, um, could have signage on it. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Those things don't need armor.
Those do not need armor.
If we're talking about, an entrance monument is way different than a gate, and if we're, and if we're set, so...
It could be, instead of a wall, if you will, it could be what I would call a green wall, accomplished by the use of vegetation. Councilperson, uh, Marasco spoke to your talented, uh, landscape architect who's worked with you in the design of the stormwater management feature. I bet you that, that individual would be able to conceive of some ideas that might use vegetation to accomplish what is being described, has been described.
Would it be something that physically can block the road, or no?
No, I would not, uh, my expectation is that it would not actually...
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a gate, it would just be an entrance monument, and I wouldn't even need any approvals. If it doesn't block the road, it's, it's not a gate.
But you, but the...
It sounds like what, uh, the mayor and council are trying to do is, from what I'm hearing, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, is they're not keen on the gate, but if there's a way to maybe landscape that area to make it narrower, to make this is, this is for residents only, um, that like, there's, but you also have landscaping in that area, um, and you have the, the pump station.
I think to Mr. Horner's point is, he can do that sans, what council group is.
What I'm trying to understand is, what I'm trying to understand is...
Can he get a gate or not?
Is there, is there any openness to a gate? If I come in with the greenest, best-looking, prettiest green gate you've ever seen...
So then, let's make a mo-, someone make a motion.
Then deny it, and then we'll figure out what the code prohibits and doesn't prohibit us.
I'll make a motion that we respect the need, but we deny the applicant's request for a gate. So we defer to the applicant to use all other techniques to try to meet the objective, but not a gate that crosses the road.
So we have a motion denied, do we have a second?
A second.
A second.
Could we have a little more discussion? Because I, I, I do want to understand, because again, I don't think anyone here is a gate expert. The concerns I hear mentioned are that, you know, Lewis is not a community that, that excludes people, we want to be open and such, and a gate sends the wrong signal, it sends a signal of exclusivity, or elitism, or whatever you want to call it. But I'm just wondering, if there's a, a way, a gate, maybe the color of the gate, you, it, it would only be noticeable, frankly, if you, when you drove up there, and you saw, "Oh, there's a gate there."
Right, that would be my goal, to be something that is totally benign, until you are right there.
Benign's a good word, right. You wouldn't, and that, that would, at least in my mind, based on the concerns, solve the concerns about optics. Nobody likes the optics of a gate, because it, and, and I, I understand it, that makes total sense, it's a reasonable view, I just don't know, I mean, I, I will have to vote, you know, against this motion, but until, I understand, because maybe there is a way that a gate could be placed there, that is very inobtrusive.
There's a technology called RFID access control systems, and what they can do is, you can have some kind of a sticker or something on the car of residents, and when they drive through, nothing happens, because they're residents. If someone drives through and it senses a car coming through that doesn't have that thing off, on it, flashing lights go off, deters them, frightens them out, they know they're not where they're supposed to be.
But when they come for Thanksgiving dinner, and their relatives come, I mean, you cause some problems.
I don't know, that's one of the systems that I looked up very quickly, that it says is a deterrent.
And, and I, I mean, if there were any openness to something that physically blocked the road, what I would do is, I would go to our landscape architect, and I would say, "Design this so that it cannot be viewed until you're pretty much as close as you can be to it, and have a very beautiful entrance landscaped, green wall, but you're not seeing the physical gate unless you are at that physical gate, which, if you're there, you've gone too far, you need to turn around, anyways, unless you can get through."
I'll be honest, like, for me, it's the ethos of it, and, um, and I, I get that you want to deter people, and you, that, keeping people off of private property, and more and more, we have people that don't respect private property, I get that. We have people shitting in people's showers on the beach, it's a shame. But nonetheless, we, we, we allow them to, you know, have access to other parts of town. So, for me, it would, it would be a no, because simply, um, it, I don't want to be the first to approve a gated community in Lewis. So, like, we can call it to a vote now, um, all in favor of, uh, Councilperson Marasco's denial? Aye. All of those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, four to one.
Four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horner.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we also ask the city planner to, to raise this issue with the Planning Commission? They need to have a voice on this, so that, development by mill, you know, if, if this is our intent, then we need to, we need an ordinance to address this.
Understood, yeah, that's why I was, it was an uncomfort of, of doing this, it's out, I feel, it's out of my lane.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Well, you just did it.
Yes, so I'm saying, I'd really have it codified going forward.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so with that, I will, Bill, is there anyone on the public, uh, who's, and I'll, I'll apologize for my language, the FCC, uh, that's viewing this later on YouTube.
It was clear.
Yeah.
We knew what you meant.
We'll go back through and, uh, bleep that later. Okay, no, no yellow hands in the virtual world, okay. Anyone in the audience here? Al, come on up.
Thank you, no bleeps. Uh, I'm Alan Roth at four thirty-seven King's Highway, thank you. Uh, I, I'm sure that, um, uh, most, if not all of you, are familiar with the, uh, traffic backups, uh, that we had on King's Highway, um, before the snow. Frankly, um, I felt like a prisoner, um, in our own city, uh, for the couple of weeks in December that, uh, that construction was going on, until the snow happened. During that time, um, I went on the Dell dot website, um, to see whether I could find out what was going on, and, um, I printed out, uh, the real-time travel advisories, which, um, go back as far as October thirtieth, but in the real-time travel advisories, there was nothing about this project. I printed out the planned closures and restrictions, which in Sussex County go back as far as April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, but there was nothing on the Dell dot website about this. I went to the Dell dot projects portal, looking for the King's Highway roundabout project, and, um, what I found was that they said on their website about the King's Highway project, that, um, construction, excuse me, let me find this page, construction was in the design and planning phase, that the construction start date was TBD, um, that design is progressing, and on their frequently asked questions page, they said, "An advanced utility relocation phase is currently expected to begin in spring twenty-twenty-seven, and is expected to last for approximately one year. Minimal disruption to traffic is expected during this phase, with periodic flagging operations during non-peak hours." I don't know what their definition of that is. The roadway construction phase is currently expected to begin in summer twenty-twenty-eight, and is expected to last approximately three years. On Coast TV, Dell dot told a reporter that what was going on out there was utility work, which apparently is totally untrue, was totally untrue, because according to the article published a couple of weeks later in the Gazette, um, and, um, I'm assuming that the spokesperson for Dell dot was telling the truth to the Cape Gazette, it had something to do with a deal that was made, uh, with Sussex County, and the development at Mitchell Farms, having to do with roadwork having to be done there. And I appreciate, uh, Deputy Mayor Saliba's assurance that we're going to get some, uh, better coordination with Dell dot for future projects there.
That's the goal.
I would really urge the council to ask Dell dot to do a public forum with the citizens of the city of Lewis, to get some kind of both assurance from them, as well as some public commitments about how it is they plan to put five roundabouts in King's Highway.
I will say this, they, they would come back and say they've had two of those already with us, at the Cape Pen Open High School. I mean, I think, I think overall, I think you're referring to that comment I made in the Cape Gazette, overall...
Which I appreciate.
Yeah, we, we need to have, and most people need to have a better relationship with Dell dot, a more seamless communication channel that we can reach out to them, because a lot of times, we just reach out, we're not sure who is in charge, and like every other government bureaucracy, sometimes you just keep getting pushed to the next person. I mean, we, we talked about the Savannah Road issue earlier, that's a Dell dot issue too. So we have a lot on our plate to deal with Dell dot, and this is certainly one of the issues.
But if, if this s- small project is any indication
Yeah.
of what is in store for the city of Lewis
Right.
over the course of the next three to five years, we're all in, our businesses are in big trouble, our residents are in big trouble. This is not survivable.
Yeah, one hand doesn't know what the other one's doing, and that's what's causing a lot of the crisis right now. We've got to get Dell dot with us, they need to let the communities that they're working around know what's going on.
I don't think they're capable of carrying out that project without all of us being prisoners here. You won't be able to get out, you won't be able to get in.
Well, there was a recent situation out by the vineyards, where workers went to show up in the morning to get to their jobs, and Dell dot had the whole roadway clogged up, and none of the workers could get into, to their stores or anything else back in the development. No one was told that it was going to be blocked off before this happened, so this is happening all over, and I think we need to demand from the governor down that they step in and get Dell dot working with the communities in the, in...
And, and, yes, the only thing that's going to happen as a result is, everything's going to spill over to Savannah Road, and to New Road, and West Coats Road, I mean, every, every action will have a reaction, and the city as a whole will be a complete mess, and I see the chief nodding his head.
You know, I think it's, it's coming to the point, thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we, I think we need to formalize our issues, you know, in a, we now have an, an appointed, um, head of Dell dot and the governor, so I think basically the mayor, city manager need to reco-, not just request a meeting, lay out our key points, and our solutions, not our, not our traffic solutions, but we want to have, at a minimum, quarterly meetings for all projects within, whatever you want to say, five miles of our city limits. You know, in other words, we have a buffer around the city, and we are impacted by every single one of these projects.
Absolutely.
So the only way, we're not going to change necessarily what they do, because I agree with Deputy Mayor, they would say, "Well, we've had public forums with every..." We need to say, you need to let us know what's going on, because then at least we can communicate to citizens. It's our understanding, it's communications. Dell dot's going to be working, you know, avoid the area, I know, I got caught in that, I was like, "I, I have to, I can't even get through." And so, I think that's our request. It's really communication. We, we need to know what's going on, and whatever, Chief, you think, five miles, three miles out of our border. We're not going to change what they do, but we can at least let our citizens know what areas to avoid, and hold them responsible to their schedules. Now, they do have a responsibility with any change in traffic pattern, that has to have, all the, all the dots are required with their traffic engineers to present, and they usually do present to the governing bodies, what plan is in place to, um, address the, the traffic that they know is going to happen. We need to know that, too. So I think at this point, we have so many issues with them, let's say, it's, it's time to start, hold them accountable, and bring them in, not necessarily that it's a public meeting about their approach, because they'll say, "We, we've done that." But let's hold them accountable to what they're doing, so we know about what they're doing, and then when it impacts our businesses, you know, sometimes the dots have to look at the economic impact of their actions, and sometimes they have to make compensations, not necessarily to the businesses, but they do signage for businesses. I know in Virginia, we had to pay for, we had to get them to pay for signage, because we, they were putting in a, a detour, and our wineries were, which here would be like any other business, they were furious. So in other words, my point is, they have some responsibility to not negatively impact our businesses and our citizens for a long period of time, and we need to get, to be on the same page with them.
And we shouldn't expect them to volunteer apps.
No, no, exactly.
It's about getting them to the table.
So can we, at this point, can we ask, um, Ellen Lorraine and staff to craft a letter for us that we could sign and, and send to some of these people?
Yeah.
Sure.
And I think that Senator Huxtable, you know, Deputy Mayor's already been talking to him, Senator Huxtable could help with that, because, you know, he says, one of his jobs is, uh, interfacing with our state agencies.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't need to vote on that item, it's not on the agenda, so you don't need to take action on that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for that. And it's, it is concerning, the real-time alerts are telling you that it's all clear sailing. Anyone else in the public, before we turn to Bill? All right, Bill, we'll give you the last word.
Just, um, a clarification on Savannah Road parking. So as it stands now, there's, there are three legal parking spaces on Knott's other road, or where does that stand?
Before tonight, there were, essentially, there were three or four that were being used.
Right.
The act, the direction will be to, um, make no parking there. The act, the direction will be to make no parking there, all the way basically down to Drake, Drake Hole area, on both sides.
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah, Alex can clarify, the area, the other area he was saying is on the, on the outbound side, is not all city lands, that's not--
Correct, and I noticed when the temporary signs went up, they were, they weren't theirs.
Right.
So, does that mean people can park across the street that's not city limits?
Correct.
They can?
Yep, no jurisdiction. So, now we have jurisdiction there?
Yeah.
There's not going to be more.
It wasn't part of--
So, can we get a clarification?
Yeah.
Outside of our jurisdiction.
Exactly, he can.
Anything else, Phil?
One, one quick question for Alan Lorraine.
Who's going to write a ticket?
Totally, a little clarification, the dredging that's going to start, will that include the overfalls?
They write--
Slip? It's just the Marina, okay?
It's other partners with the cities can afford parks.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you.
So, I just want to get clarification, Christine Jones, Lewis, Breen. I think, Chief, you had said that that's not city limits, correct?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, so, does that mean that we can park across the street there?
We can't endorse that, I mean, I shouldn't encourage people to do it.
Okay, but we're not going to be ticketed?
I don't, I can't--
Not by the Lewis Police Department.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that the state doesn't do something, it's not our jurisdiction.
Okay, but that's not part of the ordinance.
It's, it, that's what Alex carved out, the reason there was a version two--
Okay.
Because he, essentially where that is, is not, and, it's not part of city of Lewis, so he couldn't include in our ordinance jurisdiction--
Okay, well, we haven't seen that revised ordinance, so, that's why I wanted to get clarification.
Here, Christine, because it, we're, here, and I'll show you where the difference is, it's, the synopsis is here, and it refers to a Sussex County tax map, which is the auto shop, yeah.
And I just have another question, did the city manager have a conversation with everybody about your conversation with Del Dot last week, and the conversation we were involved in?
Yeah, because you called it.
Okay, so you still wouldn't communicate that with council?
So, that is where we heard that there's no state law prohibiting parking in a bike lane.
Right. And then, did you also talk about the study that they said they, you guys could do, but it would be the cost of the city to do that?
I think they're aware that we can do a study.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if everybody was communicating with everybody here. Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. The other questions, we'll go back to the virtual audience, anyone, anyone on the line, otherwise I will call for an adjournment, or adjournment, not an agenda.
Is that a word?
That's not a word.
That's a very nice--
Adjournment?
Can I get a motion for, to adjourn?
I do.
Oh, motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor? I couldn't come fast enough.